To order for Polk County Commissioners Court, November 25th, 10:00 AM, in the Polk County Regional Health Building, Suite 8. If you would please make sure that you turn off or mute all your cell phones or any other devices. And at this time, we would like to ask our fire alliance to please lead us in prayer.
Joining for the joy of prayer, both in God's name of Jesus, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for your blessings that you bestowed upon us, Lord. We ask that as we go into this Thanksgiving season, Lord, that you would, that we would keep an eye on, Lord, that the gifts, Lord, and the blessings that you have blessed us, Lord, and that we, that we would ask that you would share those good, blessed, fortunate. Have a prayer, have a blessing for our leaders, Lord, that touch their hearts, and, Lord, that we will, Lord, come together and do what's best for our community. We pray this in your darling son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Madam clerk?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, our legislative seat in Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have Billy Lambeth.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Lambeth?
Just wanted to give y'all-
We have a goose report.
Yes, ma'am. They still there. All forty-six of them.
You've counted them now?
I beg pardon?
You're counting them now?
Well, I better count every time. But they're still out smart in our service department. They haven't called yet. So we just wanted to let y'all know they are still there.
Oh, that. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to do a proclamation for Ray Garing's 100th birthday. And you know what, Ray? I guess we should have asked you to say the prayer. I should have realized that we had a preacher in the house.
More than one of us knows how to pray.
And, well, let's hope so. Let's hope so. So let me go through this, and then we're going to get you to come up here and take a picture with us, if you don't mind. So whereas longevity of life is a profound blessing for both the individual and the community that benefits from the wisdom, creativity, and lifelong experiences that person shares, Polk County holds deep respect and admiration for many contributions of our senior citizens make. Mr. Ray Garing was born on December 7th, 1925, in western Pennsylvania, where he later pursued both college and seminary studies. He has faithfully served as a Presbyterian minister, moved to Oklahoma, Little Rock, Arkansas, and then finally ended up in Polk County. Following his retirement, Ray and Ruth embraced adventure by moving into their RV and traveling the country for more than five years that ultimately led them to Polk County to escape these rainbows in community and its care center. He's not an introvert, for those of you that don't know Mr. Garing. He quickly became an active and engaged member of Polk County, joining the Rotary Club, serving on the care board, singing in the Presbyterian Church Choir, and donating more than ten gallons of blood, consistently seeking new and meaningful ways to serve others. After Ruth's passing, he married Suzie Dunaway, and together they connected with Habitat for Humanity and have been instrumental in building that program. Always looking for ways to inspire and support young people, Ray championed Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, introducing the program to fellow Rotarians, and what became a Rotary project grew into reading encourages advanced development for Polk County, which is where all children under kindergarten age receive books. I was on that same committee with Ray, as were several other Rotarians.
At the start.
So today, the citizens of Polk County proudly celebrate and honor Ray Garing for reaching the remarkable milestone of 100 years of life, a century marked by service, faith, kindness, and unwavering dedication to others. Now be proclaimed that today, Polk County, on behalf of Commissioners Court and the citizens of Polk County, we honor and recognize Mr. Ray Garing for his remarkable life, extraordinary service, and enduring impact on our community and others, and extend heartfelt wishes for continued joy, health, and many more birthdays to come. Come on up, Ray Garing. That's another Reed apartment.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
So proud of you.
Happy birthday, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good to see you.
My pleasure.
Okay. Are we squared? This is your proclamation for you to take with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. You want to say something? Not a lot, because we know you're a preacher.
Well, you didn't give me a microphone, so you don't have to take it away.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, I've been really, really blessed, and what a privilege it's been to be a part of the community, to be part of getting Habitat for Humanity started in Polk County. And we're very proud to have started the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And I will give a report. Dolly Parton has now sent over 141,000 books to the children in Polk County, Texas.
Oh. That's it?
Thank you. All of you.
Yeah, our church, our churches, it's a fantastic, amazing program.
It's all positive.
I don't like it as bad as anyone.
Oh, we're on track.
Okay, we have another proclamation. Is Brian here, or is anyone else here?
He's at work.
Huh?
He's at the recycling center.
Oh, okay. We do also want to do a proclamation. Do you want to come up here and take a photo with us? Okay.
And anyone else that we have in the audience?
Anyone else that is here with recycling? So Polk County recognizes the importance of reducing waste and promoting sustainable practices that protect our environment and natural resources for future generations. Recycling plays a vital role in maintaining responsibly, conserving energy, and preserving the beauty of our community. So Polk County Recycles Week is observed from December 1st through December 7th, encouraging all residents to take part in activities that support waste reduction, recycling, and environmental stewardship. It comes at the beginning of the holiday season, because we realize that that is when a lot of individuals are going through cooking more and utilizing more resources. So it serves as a reminder to be mindful of consumption, reuse, and repurposing materials. So we would like to encourage everyone to continue to utilize the recycling centers, including the On Alaska Loop Recycling Drop Off, and be it proclaimed, from Commissioners Court of Polk County, that we proclaim December 1st through December 7th as Polk County Recycles Week. And thank you to both of these individuals, because basically, we started a program that allowed Polk County to participate and reduce waste in our landfill. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I didn't plan on being here for that.
You can be here.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Okay. We need, the next thing on our agenda is to receive our yearly report from Grants and Contracts in Purchasing and Procurement Department.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'll lay this out in front of you. It's just, it's all the grant-
Do you want us to put your display up?
I will at the end. I will. I'll show you all the ends. This is all the grants that I've worked on since I started back in 2018, and it's just a list that y'all can go through later and kind of see what we've worked on, and what departments, and what areas we've assisted. But since the creation of Polk County Grants and Contracts Department in 2017, taxpayers have benefited significantly from the county's strategic investment in dedicated grant professionals. The department's work has brought substantial outside funding into Polk County, expanding services, improving infrastructure, and reducing the burden on local taxpayers. So grant-
Could you speak up? Because I don't know if everybody can hear you, because this is most important.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
And you've done such a great job.
Project, project.
Please, because I don't want to hear you back.
So grant funds received to date since I started in 2018 is $45,994,167. And we've matched that with local funds with $10,907,480. with outside grant funding. This demonstrates an exceptionally strong return on investment and reflects the court's commitment to leveraging external resources to stretch the taxpayer dollars further. So when I started in 2018, we had eight grants. This last year, let me rephrase that. When I started in 2018, we had eight grant projects. This last year, we had 73 grant projects.
Oh.
So the county is, so major initiatives that we worked on includes infrastructure improvements, roads, broadband, water systems, disaster recovery and resilience efforts, public safety and emergency management enhancements, community development projects that benefit the rural and underserved areas, restoration of county history, improvement of cybersecurity infrastructure, and salary and communication equipment for the sheriff's office. And we currently manage approximately 285 active contracts in our database, and we renew and enter into around 50 new agreements a year. As shown in the accompanying data, our grant workload has expanded significantly over the years. Contract management, meanwhile, has required a coordinated team effort to keep the annual grants agreements in compliance. To support this growth, both the Purchasing and Procurement Coordinator and Secretary Two positions will play key roles in strengthening the department. Nicole will oversee service contracts that require procurement, while Courtney will manage the contract portfolio. Beginning early next year, our department will transition both grants and contracts into our in-code system, which will streamline the processes, enhance communication across departments, and improve coordination with our auditor's office. We look forward to the increased efficiency and improvement that the management, this management system will bring. And as we look ahead, I want to leave you with this. Polk County moves, Polk County moves forward when we move forward together. Instead of dwelling on frustrations, I'm asking all of us, county leaders, elected officials, and residents, to shift our energy towards solutions, be a part of the answer, not the weight that holds progress back. Many of the grant projects we pursue begin with ideas brought to us by you, the community members and departments who see a need and speak up. Your voice matters. Your ideas guide the work we do, and when you communicate those needs, we can go after the funding and resources to make them possible. I encourage you, stay engaged, bring us your ideas, your concerns, and your project requests. Talk with your commissioners, county judge, or me. Our doors are open, and we want to hear from you. If we don't know what you need, we can't fight for the funding to make it happen. Let's work together constructively, collaboratively, and with purpose to build a thriving Polk County. And with the assistance of Linda, she printed a large map, and I could place all the grant projects that we've worked on that I could actually place on a map. There are some things like salary and equipment that I couldn't. But these are projects that we worked on in Polk County since I started in 2018, just to give you an idea of how we've been widespread over the community.
Any questions so far?
Thank you very much.
It's been a good job.
We appreciate it, Jessica. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'd like to provide a brief update on the recent efficiency and cost-saving initiatives of the Purchasing and Procurement Office. Since November of 2023, we focused on strengthening the county's purchasing processes, expanding vendor participation, and improving fiscal stewardship. One of our major accomplishments has been the implementation of Beacon Bid, our online bidding platform. Beacon Bid comes at no cost to the county and has significantly improved our vendor outreach. Where we previously reached only a few hundred suppliers, we are now connected with over 4,000 vendors across a wide range of fields. This increase has helped improve competition and the overall quality of our solicitations. We've also updated the county's procurement webpage and standardized our bid packet terms and conditions to align with the best practices. We continue to see strong growth in competitive solicitations. In fiscal year '23, we issued 19 solicitations. In fiscal year '24, we issued 24. And in fiscal year '25, we issued 23 that did not include grant solicitations. This trend reflects our ongoing commitment to transparency and open competition. We've also made significant progress in reducing unnecessary costs. Through stronger purchasing controls and better training, we have nearly eliminated avoidable sales tax payments when we're making purchases. In addition, enhanced oversight of credit card usage has resulted in major reductions. Walmart credit card purchases have been decreased by nearly $15,000 from last fiscal year, and charges to our Citibank cards has been reduced by about $50,000 fiscal year '25 as compared to fiscal year '24. Our use of cooperative purchasing agreements has also expanded. Over the past year, we've completed more than 100 discounted purchases, each saving the county at least 15% on every item purchased. We also conducted 18 supplier negotiations through Omnia's Quick Connect System. These efforts have produced savings for departments, including maintenance, emergency management, and the sound equipment that was purchased for Dunbar Gym. Our renewed partnership with Byboard has also helped secure the customized jail bus, as well as discounted docking stations for law enforcement vehicles, with the added benefit of we also gain rebate eligibility with those purchases. Telephone billing audits revealed nearly $14,000 in annual expenses tied to unnecessary phone lines. Those charges were corrected, refunds have been received, and the findings initiated at a competitive solicitation for a service provider, which has begun rolling out. Looking ahead, we're exploring centralized ordering of basic office supplies to reduce overall spending and streamline departmental requests. We're also working closely with Grants and Contracts Department to review expiring contracts and identify where competitive bidding or cooperative purchasing may enhance the county's purchasing power. In summary, our office remains committed to improving efficiency, expanding competition, and ensuring responsible use of taxpayers' dollars. We look forward to continuing these efforts and supporting every county department in the upcoming year.
Good job. Thank you. Glad you're working. You closed them with Brad. She walked out before we could say any questions. Nope. No questions allowed. Thank you, Nicole. Okay, both of, both of those departments have done a great job. Okay, old business. We have the minutes. Item number four, approved minutes of previous meeting, which was October 14th, 2025, regular session. A copy of the minutes was included in your packet for your review.
Approved.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Dubose, Second Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, approved minutes of the previous meeting, October 28th, 2025, regular session. A copy of those minutes has been included for your review as well.
So moved.
Commissioner Cassidy, Commissioner Purvis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, receive rating and recommendations from court-appointed scoring committee and consider any and all necessary action relating to the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Local Communities Program as follows. One, the item was, select an engineering firm, assist the county in its applications, and project, and project implementation of one or more contracts if awarded by the Texas General Land Office. At this time, the recommendation from the committee is to delete this agenda item, and once the court moves forward with a grant administrator, which was already accepted as Waxman, to select projects, then it would be best to rebid so that the engineer qualifications with those specific projects in line.
So moved.
Motion to table Commissioner Purvis, Second Commissioner Cassidy.
Are we deleting or taking?
Delete. Excuse me. Well, heck, I was getting ready to tell people why you weren't here. Court went quickly. You went from court to court. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, new business, your consent agenda. You have an addendums, two addendums on number eight. The first addendum is in the amount of $5,715.13. The second one is $395,206.49. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you wish to fold for discussion?
So moved.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Purvis, Second Commissioner Cassidy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, new business, our regular agenda. Item number 23, consider approval of personnel matters as follows. Personnel action form requests submitted by department heads since the last meeting, a review of any authorized emergency hiring. There are no emergency hires on this agenda. All the preliminary listing of the PAS is in your packet.
Approved.
Second. Commissioner Dubose, Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 23B, update to book two of the personnel management system with regards to on-call and emergency callback pay. In September, the court adopted a policy to update that included on-call pay effective October 1. It was intended to provide pay for those employees that are not exempt and whose job descriptions do not include maintaining availability for returning to duty, but whose offices routinely have an on-call schedule so that someone is available in the event of an emergency outside of normal business hours, such as IT, maintenance, emergency management, and road and bridge. So there have been several questions. We put the copy of the updated policy included for your review. The on-call section has been redrafted to clearly define that this section applies only to the intended employees that are engaged to wait. It has been more clearly defined as an employee who is required to stay on county property or in the immediate area effectively waiting for work to be assigned. Waiting to be engaged will not be automatically paid for three hours per week at their regular rate, but will receive a minimum of three hours paid at their overtime rate each time they are called in to work. A section for emergency callback pay has been added. This also applies only to employees that are not exempt and whose duties do not include maintaining on-call availability. It applies to all eligible employees that are called back to work to handle an emergency of such nature as to require immediate remediation by the employee. Employees getting an emergency callback will be paid a minimum of three hours at their overtime rate. James, do you want to come explain further or field any questions?
Anybody have questions about it? I mean, our goal was to make such as whoever's on call this weekend in your precinct, and you get the phone call, a tree fell down over such-and-such road, somebody's got to go take care of it. Okay? That was our original goal, but as we dwelled down into it, we realized that there's kind of three phases to this. There is those folks that are just ready for you to call them and say, come in, and then there are folks that have to be locked down. And so it was, we had to clarify it. That's why we have now three steps to it. But-
And when we reviewed other, we looked at other counties. We got, you know, input from other counties, especially our, our same size.
Yeah. Most of the counties don't have a plan like this. It's just, you just have to come back in. So we wanted something that would allot for these folks to be recognized financially for being there ready for us and for the county.
And keep in mind, this is during Bluebird days. So if we have a declared emergency, then-
That's, yes.
All bets are off for this.
Yes, that's, that's-
Because everybody's going to have to respond. So this is just for Bluebird. Any questions?
I'll answer.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a motion.
So moved.
I'll second. Commissioner Cassidy, Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 23C, discuss and consider requests from county court at law to use discretionary funds for a one-time bonus. Judge Brown has requested to use the discretionary funds that he received this year to grant one-time payments of $1,003 to Joanna Brown, Andrea Simmons, Jeremy Thompson, and Sabrina Richards, and this will reduce his discretionary funds to zero, so there will be no discretionary funds in his department to roll over to 2027. A copy of the request was included for your review.
So moved.
Make the motion, Commissioner Robertson, Commissioner Purvis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 24, consider requests for revisions and amendments to the budget as follows. The FY 2025 and FY 2026 budget revisions and amendments as presented by the county auditor's office. A copy of the proposed revisions, number 2025 through 2022, and amendments 2025 through 22A, and the 2026-06A is included for your review.
So moved.
Commissioner Cassidy, Commissioner Dubose. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 25, consider requests for capital purchases to be paid from general fund balance and included in the FY 2026 reimbursement resolution for year-end issuance of legally authorized debt as follows. The purchase of aftermarket camera equipment from Axon Enterprises with five-year terms for the sheriff's office in Constable Precinct 2, to be purchased from the sheriff and constable capital outlay at an annual cost of $17,517.46. The court previously approved the purchase of aftermarket equipment for the sheriff's office and constable vehicles as part of the enterprise lease agreement. That approval covered only the equipment included in the lease and did not account for the camera systems installed and maintained by Axon Enterprises. They're five-year agreements, but they were not included in the original capital purchase projection or in the sheriff's budget requests, and basically, they are essential for daily operations. At this time, we're still below the estimate for capital purchases, and a copy of the Axon proposal is included for your review, along with a copy of the tax note worksheet with the proposed expenses added.
So moved.
Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sheriff, might this be, didn't John Sanders used to kind of keep up with the vehicles? So maybe that's something we need to add to the budget process next year so that we don't leave equipment off on you? Some kind of checklist, or, you know, something that allows everybody to, to keep track of it? Okay, thank you. Item number 26, consider any and all necessary action relating to expenditures from maintenance capital-outlay buildings, which are budgeted funds, for HVAC and duct replacement at Precinct 3 Sub Courthouse. Maintenance Superintendent Grady Woods has requested this agenda item. The system is in very poor condition, and now the AC is going out. If the duct work is not updated at the same time, the cooling and heating issues will continue. Per the purchasing policy, since this project will exceed $19,999.99, he solicited three proposals, receiving bids from Dillon Air Conditioning and Heating in the amount of $22,815. Ferraris Heating and Air Conditioning in the amount of $32,750. And all-weather AC Heating in the amount of $46,236. Grady recommends moving forward with Dillon. Copies of the three proposals are included for your review.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Cassidy. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 27, discuss and take action on construction bids received for the, for the General Land Office Community Development Block Grant, Regional Mitigation Program, Road Projects in Precincts 2 and 4. This is GLO contract number 24-065-044-E536. On November 18th, 2025, the county- On November 18th, 2025, the county received construction bids from four contractors. For the project, GLS is making the following award recommendations to support. Award bid package 1, bid package 2, bid package 3, and bid package 3 additive bid 1 in the amount of $1,031,509 to the low bidder, which is Rayford Truck and Tractor. So the grant funds that were available for construction was $3,768,960.50. Previously obligated was $2,250,980.05. The proposed award is for $1,031,509. And so the grant funds remaining is $486,471.45. And we have them here if anybody would like to ask any questions. Susan, you want to come up?
Sure.
The copies of the.
Answer any questions.
Yes, copies of the bid tabulations and the GLS recommendation letter were also included in your packet for your review.
Right, the previously obligated, the 2.2 million is for the bridges in those two precincts. And those, we just had the pre-construction conference and they will start right after the first of the year on those. So we don't have any road closures during the holidays. And so this is our Goodman Lasseter's recommendation. Nick had a family vacation already scheduled for this week, and so I'm standing in for him. So otherwise, he'd be here with you this morning as well.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Perfect.
I was here the day.
It would be two and four that had questions.
Right, good, one and three were already awarded and those are underway.
I do have one.
Yes, sir.
It's a race.
Yes, sir.
There's no start, projected start date on that.
Oh, yeah, on this one?
On the bridge, I know.
On the bridges, yes. No, it, being awarded today, then we would go and do a pre-construction conference and I would assume that they would start right after the first of the year. We've had very good experience with them in two other counties. And as soon as we award, they like, when can we start? So I think you'll be very pleased with them as well.
I met them the other day.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to approve your recommendation.
Commissioner Dubos.
Second.
Commissioner Cassidy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Number 28, discuss and consider approval of resolution to submit application to the Texas Veterans Commission Fund for the Housing for Texas Heroes Grant Program. Melissa Gates has requested the court's approval to apply for $100,000 under this grant. And what it does is it provides accessibility modifications to support living in a home based on physical disabilities or handicaps. Critical repairs which make the home safely livable and weatherization services to prevent the elements from entering the home and causing further damage. Veterans and surviving spouses are eligible if they are very low income or low income and reside in their own home. There's a maximum of $35,000 maximum allowable cost per project, including all applicable direct costs and related inspections cost. Is Melissa here with us today? Melissa, are you hiding?
Well, you.
Okay, I would like to point out that this is her second grant application that she has put in. So this is separate and distinct from the current grant that we have going that is providing services to veterans.
Yes, and since the first grant started, that's been some calls that I've gotten is home repairs. So this was a goal to hopefully get this grant. I just wanted to get my feet wet with the first grant. And so the second one wanted to be a big benefit to our veterans because I've talked to some folks that are living in some extreme substandard housing.
So, sounds good. And you're working with Jessica on that idea, yes? Okay.
Yeah.
So moved.
I'll take it. Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Robertson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Melissa. Okay, 29, discuss and consider approval of change order 011 for the courthouse restoration project for bean wrapping generator, millwork, exterior concrete, and tax assessor collector's new location to be paid from the restoration project funds. A copy of the change order and supporting information was distributed to the court by email on Friday, November 1st. A copy is also included in your printed packet. The Texas Historical Commission has confirmed that funding for all change orders required due to previous unknown issues such as these are eligible for supplementing funding by the state. And this change order will be submitted by December for their review and consideration in January.
So moved.
Second, Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Robertson. Any questions or?
When you say consider a grant to pay back.
Yes.
About half of them.
No, sir, they will consider the whole thing.
The whole thing.
Yeah, the whole thing is considered. And part of it, and certainly Jessica can answer some of those questions, but part of it was the tax assessor collector, it did not have enough space in what was originally designated for that. And because Tatum has taken the initiative that every person in her office, and Tatum, you can correct me if I say anything differently, that every person in her office will be able to do both duties. Instead of you having a license plate side and a property tax side, then every person at their station will be able to do both things. So then you don't have a huge line on one side when it's tax season with very little happening on the other side.
That's a big plus.
Yes.
Carl's training them, they're all on the same level in the same spot.
Yes.
She convinced me of it.
She is working, she's working on cross-training everybody. But basically what will happen is that they will be integrated. Everybody will be integrated and working and trained both ways. So it's an increase, an improvement in efficiency, and it will have a big impact for our taxpayers. Excellent. Is that correct?
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item 30, discuss and consider the sheriff's request for authorization to conduct a feasibility study with DRG architects at a cost not to exceed 20,000 to assess bringing additional housing units in the old jail into compliance with Texas Commission on Jail Standards and determine the method of funding. The sheriff's office is requesting it to engage DRG architects at a cost not to exceed 20,000 to conduct the feasibility study for evaluation to bring those unhousing units into compliance. And according to the sheriff's office, this request involves both portions of the older facilities, including the old, old jail. Do I have that correct? And the newer section of the old jail. And Commissioner Purvis and Commissioner Dubos recently met with the original architects of those structures to evaluate their current condition and to explore options. This would allow us to fully restore the old jail and to add new beds to the current main jail facility. Getting them to operational standards would likely be more economical and quicker than to complete than pursuing a physical expansion of the jail. There's obviously an operational necessity of this study because we have a continued rise in incarceration levels and the resulting need to house inmates outside of Pope County. So the feasibility study will allow us to determine what is required to bring them into compliance and evaluate the most cost-effective long-term strategy for meeting both current and future detention needs. You want to come on up and add to that?
Yes, ma'am. You know, what we're trying to do, we had talked, Melissa had kind of mentioned that we're approaching the options or even considering looking at trying to build a new jail or new addition. And once we started looking into that, financially, it's just horrible when we're looking at that cost. So feasibly, it's more feasible and more prudent that we take what we have and try to bring it up to code, bring it up to standard. Some of the issues that we have, because jail commission changed some of the footage of how much footage you have to have to be able to house inmates in specific areas. So we went back to the original contractors who have the knowledge and be able to assist us with even to be able to apply for some variances that will kind of allow us to get around some of the footage issues that we may have of housing, whether one person or two people in a, in specific spaces. But we really need to be able to have the feasibility study before we go forward. Because there may be some issues that where we may have to change what I call the footprint of the existing jail. But it will allow us, my goal is to be able to bring all those inmates back from Louisiana, as well as the females that we're keeping over in San Sana County. We are fast approaching, we're just shy of a billion dollars in six months. So this will allow us the possibility of being able to bring all those inmates back. But we really need to have this feasibility study to make sure that we stay in compliance with jail commission.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so we would have need to determine the method of funding. We can use contingencies, line items that we have right now. But we also had brought to you, we had added the.
IAH money.
The IAH money, yeah. We have, we have the money that we have on the next agenda item for distribution of the IAH revenues and depository interest, which is what we've historically done, so we can utilize those monies there.
Sounds like a wise idea.
And then we don't put our contingency funds in a jam.
Works for me.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Robertson, Second Commissioner Dubos, for $20,000. And then to get it out of IAH and depository surplus.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, item number 31, discuss and consider distribution of surplus FY 2025 IAH Secure Adult Detention Facility and depository interest revenues to Road and Bridge and Maintenance Department for capital improvements. Historically, the court has distributed surplus IAH revenues when available to the Road and Bridge unless they were needed elsewhere for unplanned expenditures. For instance, in 2024, the court used the IAH revenues in the amount of $209,028 to fund unplanned infrastructure projects, which was the drain repairs of the jail, and distributed the remaining $516,789 to Road and Bridge. Surplus depository interest revenues were used to fund the FY 23 and 24 capital purchases in lieu of issuing debt. In 2025, we brought in $1,009,760, excuse me, $1,009,768 in surplus depository interest revenues and $730,420 in surplus IAH. And so we need to distribute that into maintenance for building, repair, and improvement. And now we're taking $20,000 out of that as well. And so what I would like to recommend to the court is that we take the $300,000 of that money and put it in the building restoration fund, which is where maintenance has to come request that additional funding from the court and take the rest of it and distribute it according to your percentages for Road and Bridge. You do need to understand that this is only for materials, for equipment, payment of loans, things like that. It can all go into the personnel budget. Because it's not a continuous funding. We, for those of you that haven't been here before, what happens is when we get these surplus revenues, then what we've done in the past is we do not spend those dollars until we have them in our hand. Once we have them in our hand, then we can utilize them, but it cannot be for a long-term cost. It can't be something that we're counting on year after year. So for one, with building restoration, eventually we have got to get IT out of all these small closets that we have them stuck in. We need for them to be able to go to a building. And also, we need to get all of Shalana's equipment back into our possession. So we need to build, we need to build our building restoration part up as well.
Need a motion for that?
I need a motion.
I'll make it. Second.
Okay, Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Cassidy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Purvis and Cassidy. What time is it now?
Uh, 10:45.